All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley. We are joined today by founder Greg Kilwin as well as Colin and Jessica from our team. Hi, guys.
Hey, how's it going?
As we're coming in today, you guys, let us know what you're excited to learn about. Hopefully, you saw the emails that have been out. If you're here, you probably did. I've sent out a couple. This is a really timely topic, and it's something that we've been working on hard on the back end for years now, actually, to to help you create systems in your business so that you can be less dependent on social platforms. And when we're talking about social platforms today, I think it's important to note that I am very much talking about the big ones, the big, big ones, you know, the Facebook, the Twitter, the, you know, those, right? And and we've seen a lot of the news lately about things that are happening on those, whether you agree with what's going on or not. All of these networks are antagonistic to our business, right, to network marketing. And so it's really important that we protect our work and what we do. So we're going to learn about what to do, how you can protect yourself more effectively in your business and and following just some really simple steps to get that done today. So we've got a lot to get through in the training. We've got some really exciting announcements to share with you guys. Real quick, though, I don't know that that anyone has grabbed the spot that opened up for a website review today. So I guess if somebody would like to grab that, I'll let you guys, team in the chat, maybe work that out, see who who will be on that today. I think I saw saw somebody comment already. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and turn off video so that we can get a good look at these slides that I've put together for you guys. This will be available as a recording, and we look forward to sharing that with you, and we'll send that out. If you guys are subscribed to our list, make sure you are. GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is a free training that we offer to anyone growing a business with Young Living, and we're excited to have this service here for you guys. So let's go ahead and stop video. And if team, if you could do that as well, I'm going to get on to sharing these slides. Let's see. All right. Can you confirm that you can see the slides, please?
Sure can.
Excellent. All right. So here we are. This is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. The topic today is how to become independent of social media. Now, if you came here today looking to have questions answered, if you have tech help, you're here live, you're stuck on something, this is for you. Go ahead and add your questions to the Q and A now so that we can help you. The team will be here to help you live. And then, of course, if it's something that needs video review, then we can do that at the close of our training here. So here's what's in store for today on our call. First, we're going to go through this training. We like to keep this inside the first thirty minutes. Then we're going to move into some exciting system updates. We've got some really cool stuff to share with you today. We'll have a couple of member website reviews as we have been doing here lately, and then we'll have Q and A that's live if there are any questions remaining. If anyone still needs help with what they're working on this weekend business, we're here to give you that time. So like I mentioned before, if you're seeing this as a recording later on YouTube, or if you have not yet shared this training opportunity with your team, again, this is free to anyone, and we are here to help you to have more independent business builders on your team, get them tied in with the weekly work session. We can help train them for you because, you know, training is not the thing that makes you money in your business, right? It's sharing. So we want to get more of this off your plate. So head over to GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession. Feel free to share this with your team. It is free to anyone growing a business with Young Living. All right. Quick question for you guys, and I'd love to hear, you know, Greg or Colin or Jess, let me know what you're seeing here. For those of you who are here, if you're using social media in your young living business, how are you using it currently? Are you using social media to communicate with your members or your team to share PV promos? Are you using it to get people curious, to get them into conversations with you so that you can sign them up? What is that looking like for you in your business right now?
Oh, it is scrolling here. Let's see if I can slow this down. Mostly Messenger to communicate with team and curious to connect with others, to make stories in private groups for paid clients. Educate on Facebook about the products. Bring them to my website. Using for prospecting, I use Get Oiling for communications and promos. I get my clients from Facebook. Team support lead groups, have a group, curiosity post networking, membership group, EO education, team group education to get curious folks interested. Lots of awesome options. They're still coming in.
Wow. So I think we can all agree that social media, Facebook in particular, but social media generally, no matter what you use, and you know, we have, we were talking about Facebook by and large right now, and we will kind of focus on Facebook in this training, although what I'm sharing here is not really exclusive to that. If you're using Snapchat or TikTok or Instagram or what have you, all of this still stands. But but yeah, this social media is a powerful tool, and it's something that we use for really valid reasons. And it's something that no matter how you feel about the current climate, and we'll get into more of this about, you know, sort of how this impacts your business, social media is something that you ought to be taking advantage of. The question is really how we are taking advantage of it and whether or not it supports the intentional growth of our business moving forward and whether or not us continuing to operate the way that we are right now puts us in any jeopardy for losing vital parts of our business, right? So today's training, we're going to talk about the truth about these social platforms and what it means for you and your business. We're going to talk about how most use social media and how we should use it, and three simple changes that you can make right now to protect your business while continuing to reap those benefits of social media. All right. So first, let's talk about the truth about these platforms. These are private businesses who absolutely reserve the full legal right to select and enforce content and conduct standards. They are clearly written on their websites. This is what we think is okay. This is what we think is not, and they reserve the right to police what's on them. Like, that's that's just the frustrating fact, right? And the other thing is they answer to shareholders, not the public. The vast majority of these big platforms, they are publicly traded, or they have shareholders. Otherwise, they don't answer to us users. They answer to the people who want them to make money, right? And they profit. They're able to pay their shareholders from advertising revenue. And in some cases, especially the bigger ones like Facebook, they own data that they can sell as well. Data on us, our preferences, who we are, sociographic information. It's kind of scary, right? But it is what it is. They profit from advertising first and foremost, and businesses pay them big money to show you content. So you're the reason why they make money, right? People who show up on there and they post and they hang out and they scroll. You are the means by which they are able to profit off of advertisers, right? And they rely, as an extent there, on a constant churn of user content, meaning you showing up and posting and commenting and other people showing up and posting and commenting to keep people coming back and increasing the opportunity for advertisers. They want you coming back and checking in multiple times a day. They want you to respond to that ding in your pocket because you're going to not just check out whatever that notification is. You're going to keep scrolling. That's going to create more opportunities for ads to show up in your feed, right? Are we seeing just quick show of hands? That makes sense, right? Their purpose is to profit off of advertising, and they want us to be there, right? And so they incentivize content that is constantly new, constantly fresh, constantly refreshing and churning. So what this means is, first importantly, this is their game and their rules. We see it has a lot of value and potential for us, but we have to recognize whether or not swimming upstream is the right move for us or the right, you know, sort of expenditure of our energy, right? We can't and won't change their rules, but we can work within them to get what we want. So this means treating social media as what it actually is. It's a virtual public square. So if you think about sort of the historic idea of the public square in a town, it's where people gather and they learn announcements, and they can communicate with each other and meet their neighbors and talk about things. It is fundamentally social and a place where bulletin boards live, for instance. But do businesses conduct all of their work on the public square? To, you know, does a person who is a carpenter or a cobbler, they make shoes, they fix shoes, like, do they take their shoes out to the fountain in the middle of the public square and make their shoes there and take their phone calls and all of that? No. The public square is there for a specific social and informational purpose, but business is conducted outside of it, right? So the idea here, and this is a mindset that I really want to encourage you to foster. When you're using social media, you're right. The idea is to bring people from that public square to your place of business. Does that make sense? Quick show of hands. Are we seeing that? We want to take people from where they're hanging out, those who are interested, and bring them over to where the action is that's relevant to them, and that's what you're creating. So we're going to use social media to engage, build curiosity, and ultimately move people off the platform. This means moving people onto a one-on-one Zoom call with you so that they sign up for Young Living. This means moving people over to your blog posts, your content, or into your member area, into your vaults and Get Oiling. We're using social media for what it is best for us for, which is to engage and build curiosity, and then moving people off to take care of the business that we bring to the table, right? So understand how this platform is designed to function so you can use it to your best advantage. Now, the second thing, big takeaway from the truth about these platforms, understand the shelf life of what you share. You remember how we talked about the fundamental sort of basis of these companies is that they exist to create money for their shareholders, for themselves, and the thing that makes them money is you continually showing up and engaging with content that's there. That fundamentally means they need people coming back multiple times a day so that they can continue selling ads and and selling and generating this advertising revenue for themselves and for their shareholders. So that means that we need to show up and post many updates per day for them to continue creating that income for themselves. And of course, we want people to be there as well so that they can see what we have to say, right? This is what this means for you, and this is critically important if you are relying almost solely or solely on Facebook for getting new leads for your business. The content that you create, these are your posts, your lives, your updates, your photos, your stories, the things that you write and share. They are not going to be reliably seen by their intended audience beyond an incredibly short period of time. Even in best case scenarios, even if you know how to game the algorithm, they are fundamentally designed to always have new content showing up to people who are coming back. So if you shared that post at the wrong time, the right people aren't going to see it, and there is no right time for all the people to see it because they aren't built for this to be your public square. It's theirs. Okay? So if you are creating legacy content and you're only posting on social media, whether that's in the feed or in groups, you are operating on a hamster wheel in your business. Now, legacy content, I'll talk about this just a little bit more, and you may have heard me talk about it before. All I mean by legacy content is stuff that isn't churned. It's stuff that continues to live on, that can be found, that can be seen long beyond the point that you shared it. These are things like blog posts. YouTube works well for this. YouTube videos. I get videos in my YouTube feed from content creators that are relevant to me who shared a video twelve years ago, and it still shows up in my feed. Right? You're not going to see a Facebook post from twelve years ago. That's not how these platforms work. All right. So we should be using social media in our business. I think we very well established that. There are so many things that you're using it for right now, and there's good reason to continue using social media for a lot of functions in your business. But what we need to reconsider is how we're using it and how heavily we depend on it. So let's talk about how most of us are using social media right now in the context of a young living business. So we're prospecting and networking, right? We are looking for new people to share with and growing our network so we have greater opportunity to share and grow our business. Then we're promoting, right? We are actively talking about oils. We're talking about lifestyle. We're talking about Young Living, and we're generating curiosity from people in our network. We're also using social media to engage directly with people, right? So people who comment or like on a post, we're moving that over into conversations in the in the DMs and private Messenger. And then we're introducing new members as well to the Young Living community. This is where groups come into play. We're sharing news and updates about their Young Living membership. So this is sharing PV promos, announcements from the company and things like that. We're also training, supporting, and communicating with our business builders on social media. Now, how should we actually be using it, right? I've just gone over the ways that we're using it. This sounds very much like the the litany of what Greg was able to to read off as quickly as he did from those comments that were pouring in. How should we be using it instead? So first, prospecting and networking is, these are the best things you really can be doing on social media. This is a great place to find new people. Generating leads is one of the best activities you can engage in on social media, period. Promoting and generating curiosity is another valuable thing that you can be doing here. This is where things break off. Sharing content from your own website to increase exposure, instead of just creating posts in groups or in your feed, you create that legacy content that lives on your website so people can come over and get more curious and then reach out to you because we're breaking the barrier of social media. We're trying to take the opportunity that their their active interest, their active engagement allows, which is when they see something, they like it, they go check it out, and now you've got a killer opportunity to actually foster that communication, that's friendship, and of course, that conversation that moves them toward becoming a new member, right? The other thing that we should be doing on social media that most of us are not doing is capturing contact information so you own your hard work. I don't care if you have fifty thousand followers on Facebook, as we've seen in recent weeks, that could be pulled out from underneath you at any point, and if you don't have those email addresses, names, and and phone numbers and or phone numbers, if you know, if you prefer to text, then what have you built that is yours? You don't own your following on social media, right? So we should be capturing contact information as often as possible from the most interested people so that we own the list from which we communicate. Then we engage with people and move that over to conversations. That is something that we're already doing and should continue doing. And then introducing people socially to the Young Living community. I am going to be getting into how we should be conducting ourselves a little differently in terms of how we maintain and grow our business and nurture our members in a way that is more secure and more structured than Facebook. All right. So there are three distinct differences here, right? First, and and of course, these three things are the things you should consider doing differently to protect your work. The takeaways from what we've talked about here. So the first thing that I want to kind of introduce to you guys is this mind your Cs. These are the three things I want you to be thinking about as you are conducting yourself on social media moving forward, because remember, I'm not telling you to ditch it, right? And and if somebody's telling you, you ought to ditch it, they may not be giving you the best advice. At the end of the day, it's one of the best places you can be to find new people, and in our business, we need new people always, right? So mind your Cs when you're interacting and working on social media. First is content. Second is conversion, and third is communication. Let's break these down. Content. Your content is what you write, say, and share in your posts. Your social content is snack food. This is the stuff that gives you energy right now. This is McDonald's or, you know, a, you know, handful of, I don't know, trail mix or something. This is a bite of a thing that gives you what you want right now, but we know we're not healthy if we live off of snacks. Our business is not healthy if our content is only snack food, right? So so mind this, right? Legacy content is like Whole Foods for your business, where it's social content is like snack food. Social content are lives on Facebook. They are posts on Facebook. They are posts on Instagram stories. Anything that you put on social media that doesn't live anywhere else is snack food for your business. Legacy content is the thing that you need for sustained, healthy growth and your path toward owning the work that you do and not relying fully on social media for you to have a presence online. So that legacy content is the stuff that is searchable and relevant long term. That's things like blog posts and YouTube videos. To a lesser degree, platforms like LinkedIn offer blogging that does have some capability that is a little bit more legacy than snack. But your blog is probably the most important part of all of this, and you do have that included in your Good Oiling account at all levels. So use social media, you guys, to share that legacy content that you create because social media can't police your blog. You are not going to get pinged because you shared a blog post, right? You are not going to get flagged when you try to write something on social media when you are simply pointing off to a piece of content that's hosted elsewhere. We aren't policing your blog. Of course, you do have to do the work of making sure that you are compliant with Young Living. That is important. But we aren't playing content police. This is your business. It's your platform. If the content that you have to share is too controversial, right, or could be construed as such, and everything is hypersensitive right now, you may want to use your member area for it, right? Gate the content because that's probably premium content that you should be sharing with people who say yes to Young Living anyway, right? Or people who are your clients or what have you. All right. So let's talk about how we can switch our habits around our content. First, when you start to write a social media post, let's say, you know, you open up Facebook or Instagram, and you're going to write a story, or you're going to, you're going to share something, I want you to stop yourself. And what I want you to do next is open up a word processor or notes on your phone or whatever you have access to, and then write out fully what you want to say. This is also just a wise thing for you to do because you never know if the app's going to crash, and then you just lose all of the time that you spent trying to write something. How many of you have had that happen before? It is so incredibly frustrating. You know, you just spent like an hour or forty-five minutes, depending on on how nitpicking you are about what you want to say, and then you totally lost it. So just as a practice, you should be doing this anyway, but here is why I want you to do this. I want you to expound further and really share your whole idea as you write this out inside of a word processor or your notes app or something like that off of a social platform. Then add a few images of your own, or you can go to a free photo sharing site like Unsplash.com to grab a couple of images that you think fit really well with the point that you're trying to make, and then write a blog post, right? Write a social media post that talks about your blog post. And then invite people to come and read it and share it and add the blog link in the post comments. So instead of writing a social media post, write just a little bit more. Fully expand your idea out, add a couple images, put it on your Get Oiling blog, and then share that in your social posts, right? Take it to the next level by adding a landing page link that allows people to subscribe to your updates on your blog posts. And now you've got people who are actually following you that you own the ability to communicate with, right? So if we switch this habit, even even if you don't, okay, landing page sounds really complicated. Okay, fine. Just start turning these into blog posts. When you have an idea, make it a blog post, share the blog post on social media. Because people, ten years in the future, will be able to see that idea that you shared, that thing that you went through the trouble to write and come up with and share with someone who needed to hear it. And beyond four hours from whenever you hit post on social media, you're really not going to get much more eyeballs on it than that period of time. But if it's on your blog, it can be found infinitely into the future so long as you've got that thing published. All right. Now let's talk about the next C, conversion. Now, all this is, is a shift that happens in your business pipeline, right? So this is someone going from a Facebook friend to converting to an actual lead for Young Living, right? So somebody said, yes, I want to learn more, or somebody opts into a landing page and wants more information from you. Another conversion event is someone who moves from becoming a Young Living lead to becoming a Young Living member. So conversion just means they're moving from one type of instance in your business pipeline to another. Now, your main goal in using social media is to get as much attention as possible, of course, but then convert the most interested people into leads on your email list so that you can communicate with them however and whenever you choose. And from there, you're looking to convert, of course, those leads into Young Living members. So the second C is about converting the attention and the exposure that you are able to get on social media into a thing that you own, which is your email list. Really important. So let's talk about our habit switch here. I want to create a simple funnel on Get Oiling, and you can do this by following GetOiling.com/GetLeads. This is a free course that teaches you exactly how to set this up. Really simple. And the thing is, if you're just offering updates to your newsletter, you don't need to create a lead magnet for it. All you have to do is actively promote your email list on social media and let people know that they'll get the real goods from you that you can't talk about on social media if they're your subscribers, right? Promote it and and really lean into this idea of intrigue, right? Like, they need to come over here because you can't talk about what's on the list on social media, so maybe you want to come over here and get on the list, right? If you're promoting something like that, you don't even need to create a thing to give away. You're literally just saying, hey, I'm going to let you in on the goods. Just put your name and email in here, and we're good to go. Right? And so if you're going to do this, just make sure that you are delivering on this promise consistently. Email your people who have said yes to hearing from you once a week. Share your thoughts with them there. Go into that greater depth and detail than you can or want to on social media and really start to build a deeper relationship in the way that you're communicating with people who say yes and subscribe to your email list. And then add that landing page link that you create for this funnel, along with the promise of what they'll get, you know, it's the inside details and everything from you to all of your legacy content. So if you create a blog post, let them know that they can get all your updates and see all the stuff, stuff that you don't even share on your blog, perhaps, if they opt into your email list. Put the link there. Let them off themselves in. Put it in your YouTube channel, right? Put it in the the description of your YouTube channel, the description of your videos, so that people know how to get on that list. All right. So let's talk about the final C. This is communication. You want to own the way you communicate and use that email list that you are building. We're going to focus on email and text and growing that list and just use social media as a way to amplify the message and grow that list. Social media is best for converting leads, right, from general interest over to people who are qualified, who have said, yes, I want to hear from you, or yes, I want to hear about Young Living. Use social media to build that list that is off of social media. And remember, Facebook, all of these platforms, these are pay to play for exposure, no matter how good you are at gaming the algorithm. So don't rely on Facebook to facilitate the critical function of communicating with your members and team. One of the biggest things that most Young Living distributors use social media for is piling their members and downline into groups and and relying on those groups and Facebook to send out updates, right, to share critical information, to disseminate information. And you know what? People don't see it, right? You can post and hope that they see it, but that's not a solid strategy. So focus on building the list and communicating with the list, right? And that's for your members, your leads, your team. So let's talk about our habit switch for communication. When you start to write a post for your members or your team, stop yourself, just like we did for the blog post. Put it in a word processor instead, and then send out an email or add that content to a members-only vault in Get Oiling. Most of the time, the stuff that you're sharing, if it's something that's helpful, you want that to be something that can be referenced long term. If you're putting it into a Facebook group, the likelihood of it being effectively referenced long term is slim to none because it is, again, even in groups, designed to move people through new content, churning new content constantly to keep people coming back to the platform. And then promote your team email list and your email communication so that it's actively used. So don't just rely on saying, okay, I made a list. Now everybody's going to open the email. No, we we have to help facilitate the habit switch of the people who are in our community. If they're used to hearing from you only on Facebook, then you need to consider actively promoting. When you make a post, say, hey, by the way, if you're not on the list yet, here's the list. Go get on it, right? Look for my email. I am only going to be sending out this kind of really valuable information that you need via email or posting it in our private group on Get Oiling, right, your site. You know, so actually promote this and don't just rely on if you build it, they will come, because that's generally not how leading people works. Another thing you can do is create saved replies in the Get Oiling system that'll help you quickly and easily share the information that you often repeat. How many of you guys have said the same thing fifty different times, no matter how big your organization is? You can create things that save time for you and help you to become more effective by putting these things into a referenceable format in a Get Oiling member area, for instance, or into a saved reply so you can send an answer to a question quickly and easily to people who are communicating with you. And then create, consider creating a dedicated vault for your members so your communication is owned, controlled, and preserved by you. All right. So these are your three simple shifts, just as a review. You're going to compose your content, your posts, in a word processor and expand the idea into a blog post. Once you've written and published that blog post, you will share that blog post on social media instead of just creating a post whose effectiveness will die within the day, right? Create a thing that will live on indefinitely. Then focus on converting your social network connections into an email list that you own and control. Promote that thing above all else, as it is the most valuable asset that you will have in your business so long as you're operating online. Then use your email list as your primary means of communication for leads, members, and team, and use your social media to amplify and remind that let your list do the heavy lifting. All right. Now, let's go ahead and talk about the elephant in the room here, Facebook groups. This is, how many of you guys right now have a Facebook group that you use for your Young Living members or for your team? This is going to be just about all of us, and you can raise your hand as well if you are adding your new members to an uplines team, and you don't have one of your own. If you are actively using one, yeah, it looks like almost everybody. The hands just keep going. So let's talk about this. This is really, really, really important. There is something to be said for social proof, which is you show up in a place and a whole lot of people are down with the same idea. That's great. That's That's great. That's powerful. Your members do need to see that this is actually something that is way bigger, right? It's the closest thing that you can get. If you put them into like an Uplines group that's really big on social media. And you could see how many real people are interacting with it. That is the closest thing virtually that you can give them. Uh, to going to convention and actually seeing how big this thing actually is, right? So I'm not poo pooing on Facebook groups on the whole, however. We cannot rely on them for the sustained growth of our business moving forward. Really important. We need to have structures in place that facilitate communication, that share content, right? And that help people to stay in the loop, get the most out of their Young Living membership, to be effective builders, and to duplicate your organization. Alright, if you're using Facebook groups for Young Living members and team with no backup off of that platform. You are operating a critical piece of your business on quicksand. It's one thing to create a social environment to nurture leads. Facebook is great for that. But when you take into account that the post churning and pay for play model of the platform is working against you. This platform has a legal right to decide what you can say and share and what it'll show to group members. That it is openly antagonistic in its policies toward our industry. Why would you place your ability to retain members and duplicate your team in their hands? So no matter your rank, you guys, it's really important that you set yourself up now to operate independently of social media. Doesn't mean you gotta leave, but you've got to get structures in place that protect your work and your ability to continue to grow. If you've got a big group or you've poured a ton of time into creating content for a Facebook group that you have for your members or your team. It's even more important for you to start taking action on this now. We are seeing social networks pull the rug out from under innocent people left and right. And we don't want to see this happen to you. If this feels daunting to you right now, the idea of shifting things off of that platform. And and it probably does if you've got a big group or one that you have poured yourself into. Don't worry. We have been hard at work creating a platform that allows you to turn and run your business the way you want to. And creating a comprehensive, step-by-step course that'll show you how to design, fill, launch, and promote your own groups. On your own website. The best part about all of this, you guys, we're giving it away. Are you excited to know more about this? Who is excited to know more about how you can move your groups off of Facebook and safeguard your business and the way that you grow and communicate? Alright, so this is a four module online course. And again, we're giving this away to you guys. Obviously, it's going to utilize the GetOiling platform. So you're gonna get the most out of this if you're already a member, but you can get access. We're not policing who gets access to this thing. We're gonna help you design a group that works beautifully to fulfill a specific purpose in your business, right? Whether that is for your members, for your builders, or for leads. Then we are going to show you the best way to figure out where your content will go, right? What you'll use for what, what you'll move over, how you move things off of Facebook, whether that's posts or videos. Or pictures or whatever, your unit section, how you can migrate that content onto your own platform. And plan and execute a strategy for content that you may need to continue producing so that you can get all of this done in an organized and easy way. And we're gonna build the group as a vault from there. Once we've planned this, inside of your GetOiling account, in a simple and straightforward way, complete with intentional automations and structure. There are step-by-step, picture by picture, showing you exactly how to get this thing set up with full examples for members, builders, and leads. And you'll launch your group in stages so that you can create momentum and leverage your team to create a powerful resource for education and duplication. And then promote your group on an ongoing basis, so it continually grows and functions as designed to save you time while growing your business. So if you're ready to own your business online, if you're ready to take this critical function of how you serve your people. Into your own hands, I want you to head over to GetOiling.com forward slash move your groups. At the time of filming this right now, uh, we are coming up on a series of live calls. That will run in this group where you'll be able to get support and guidance throughout this process. So I encourage you, if you have any desire to begin moving the structures of your business to a more reliable way of operating. I want you to head over here, GetOiling.com forward slash move your groups and get started on planning and production on this. We walk you through every step in order, and you've got those worksheets that I just showed you and spreadsheets that you can use and examples to follow. And we're gonna work together to help you create the resource that you need, that works the way you want it to on your platform. That you're not gonna get shut out of, because we answer to you. Head over here, GetOiling.com forward slash move your groups. We're so excited to help you take ownership and get this done in your business. Alright, so now I'm gonna kick this over to Greg. We've got some really exciting new updates on the platform. Including a place where you can actually go check out where all of the new updates are whenever you want to. Uh, I'm gonna stop my share here, and Greg, I don't think I've made a co-host, so I'm gonna make sure I do that now. Are you guys totally excited about this? Who is so excited to move their groups? I'm so thrilled to see so many people here right now with those hands raised. Really excited to see you guys get this thing done.
The chat has been super exciting as well. Scrolling super fast, I can't even read it all, like, yeah, it's awesome.
Great.
Cool. Yeah, so got some fun stuff to share here today. Uh, let me share up my screen. Um, we've got a couple of new features. Well, actually, three, if you count the feature that is the announcement of new features, um, which is a bit meta. But that's that's kind of cool. So there will be like a little icon that shows up here if there's a new product announcement. That's like the first thing we've done is so any, uh, a lot of times we announce these changes on our weekly work session. But of course, not everyone knows every little thing and not every announce, not every little update is worthy of like announcing on this, uh, on this venue. So we're gonna have a little feed. There's gonna be a little icon that shows up next to the little GetOiling logo here whenever there's something new. And you can click on it and it'll tell you what it is, and you can give us feedback right there, too. There's a little box that will pop up. And it'll show you what it looks like. Um, you know, you can see what this is and leave some feedback and read more about it and kind of see a history of all that. So that is, uh, good. Can you see my screen, by the way? I just want to make sure. Okay, cool, because I've been having trouble with Zoom screen sharing, so I'm glad it's working. Anyway, so yeah, that's the that's the first one there is a little product announcement section, which I'm super excited about. So that we can, um, get that in front of everybody that's using the system that might not have time to come to the weekly work session. Anyway, so the first change is actually both of the changes today are for the website page builder. I've been making some continual improvements to those. And as you can see, maybe you've you've clicked on the announcement already that popped up right before the weekly work session. But, um, there's, there's a couple of new features. There's a sticky page section, which is kind of cool. I'll have to demo that. This is definitely something that needs a little video to go with it. It's very hard to describe. And then there's a copy in section or copy in feature where you can copy in other pages. This is really useful when you're editing a lot of sites. Did my screen share just stop? Because my little glowy box went away.
We can see you fine.
Okay, okay, cool. Alright, so the sticky section. So what I've done here is I've used one of our built-in themes. Uh, I just created a new page in the page builder, which for those of you not familiar, I'll show you here quick how to get to the page builder. Uh, it's under the My Site menu here on the left. Click on Settings. Come over here to the Custom Pages button. And then on the bottom, oh, there's a tutorial if you want to watch it, but you can create a page. And there's a number of templates to choose from. So I've chosen this template here, so just sort of bare bones template. Um, that I'm starting with. I haven't really modified it a lot. Uh, I added some animations to make it a little more fun. But so what we have now, I'll show you the, I'll view what we have. Let me close that out. Um, I'll view this page as kind of as is. So this is like, as it comes out of the box. Like I said, I did add a little animation, so you can see there's some some fun stuff that happens here as you scroll down. Uh, we've talked about the animations before, but I just wanted to show you what the page looks like, uh, before I add the sticky sections to it. So let me close this now. And every section now has, in your section background, has a couple of different, um, new checkboxes. As you scroll down amongst all the other fun stuff like parallax and all that, there's now a stick to top and stick to bottom section or checkbox. So you can click that. You can't choose them both at the same time, because obviously you can only stick it to one place at the top. But I'll I'll choose this top section to stick to the top. And what I'm gonna do here now is I'll make a copy of this section, um, just to show you some of the fun stuff you can do with it. I'll move it down, um, or. Move it down another section here. So basically down a little bit. So I've got a duplicate of that section down here. I'm just gonna change this to say like. I love helping people like you reach your goals. Okay, so now I've got a couple of sections here, and I'm gonna make this one, actually, this one probably should be sticky already since I already did that. And then the very bottom, I'm gonna go down here to the little bar on the bottom, and I'm gonna stick that one to the bottom. So stick it to the bottom. Let me save, uh, and I will show what this does now. So I've turned off the menu too, just so you can see. Normally, there's the GetOiling menu on the top, and this does work with the menu if you have it on, but for this demo, I don't. So as I scroll down, now notice that this top section is staying there. It's not scrolling off the page, and notice that this bottom bar is actually, oh, somebody's saying my screen is frozen. Oh. Are you seeing it or is it?
Oh, no, that's actually, no, it's stuck. I don't know. Are you, um, so we see the the sticky page test and it's still like at the top. Uh, top part of the editor there.
At the editor, okay. Well, here, let me stop and restart my screen share. This has been happening with Zoom lately, so I don't know.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Couple days.
Um, hopefully this works. Is this, is it showing back up? Or hopefully it's not black.
It is black currently, unfortunately.
Of course, this has been happening exactly every time that I, uh, yeah, every time that I've done a screen share, it works for five minutes and then shuts off. So, uh, I don't know, is it back? My green bar is back. Does it work?
No.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Bummer. Pause, resume. Let me jiggle some buttons here and make sure, see if this works. Uh, let me try this one more time. If not, actually, since your screen share was working, I could probably send you the link to see what was.
Totally.
Um, what was done? Are you seeing anything? If not, I'll have to pick this over to you here.
If you want to send it over to me, maybe I'll see if that works.
Yeah, let me put that over here. Okay, so that's the. And that, and then.
Alright.
In case you need the editor, I'm logged in as that John L. Demo account. That's the actual page, but I was just showing, unfortunately, it did save the sticky part, so you can, maybe this will show what it does when you pull it up on your screen.
Yes, it does. Ooh, that's cool. You guys see that?
Yeah, the top sticks. Yeah, yeah, we can. So like the top sticks, you can see how like that first bar as you scroll down. Or the the top sticky section stays there, and as you scroll down and that second section that I made stick to the top, that I love helping people like you reach your goals. It'll like replace what's there, there as you scroll up.
What?
So that is super cool. Uh, and then that Ready to Change Your Life bar on the bottom just sticks to the bottom all the time. So you can have a constant call to action, um, which is really fun. And then I combine it with some animations to make this page extra fun.
Oh, my God, you guys. I was today years old when I found this out. I am so excited to use this. Oh, my God, this is amazing for homepages and sales pages. Wow.
Yeah, it's it's super fun. And so to go with this, um, are you logged in? Is that test account? If not?
I am not, but I can. I can. Here, let me go put that in.
Because we've got that copy and page section that I'd like to show off to, uh, virtually through your machine, apparently. I even rebooted right before the show.
I'm trying to find the John L. Account and.
Okay.
There we go. I think I got him. Alright, I'm gonna share this here, and we should be good to go again. Alright, what did you want to show here?
Um, yeah, so pull up, I I sent you another link to the, that sticky page test.
Cool.
There it is. Okay, so now, uh, there's a copy in section feature. So anywhere that you're adding a section, like you can click in between a section of that little green hover bar, or you can click the add button on top. But yeah, go ahead and click that.
Okay.
And it'll pop up a little box. Now there's a copy in another page button in the upper right-hand corner. And so once you do that, you can click on that. It'll come up with a list of all your pages, and you can copy in any page into your page. So if you have a section that you reuse over and over and over, you can make, say that it's on pages and essentially. And then you can just like put that into your page or if you want to. So we've had some people, um, kind of where this came up, I mean, aside from its general usefulness, we've had some people. Adding content to their vault, and and so they wanted to like, you know, somebody was giving them information or pages or page sections from a. A resource bundle, and they wanted to add that into a page in their vault. So this is a great way of doing that to like adding to a page, or if you've got a menu or something that you want to always appear. Which you can kind of do now with that cool little stick to top, stick to bottom thing. So, um, yeah, anyway, that's that's where that came from. This is another super time saver, I think, having to, the other way was kind of challenging, having to copy and paste. So yeah, that's our.
Absolutely.
Announcements for today, and that's all in that little pop-up thing.
Yeah, so you guys, if you ever want to see anything that's new, look for the little, uh, well, I I just clicked it and it went away. But you can catch yourself up on anything that's new in the system. We've always got new, fun, exciting things. Uh, that Greg is behind the scenes creating for you guys. Uh, I'm over here trying to teach you how to do it, how to use all this stuff, and Greg just keeps adding more things that are really cool that I want to start using too. So this is really fun. I'm nerding out over here. Um, alright, thank you for sharing that. Excited to get into our website reviews. I do have one person who was registered. Was there someone else who, uh, uh, team was, what did we, do we decide? Um, I am going to invite confirmed today Tammy Taylor. If you could please come on out, raise your hand. I would like to have a look at your site and get this review going. Um, let me see if I can find you in here. There you are. Hi, Tammy. Alright, Zoom is gonna be weird for me today. Alright, you should be able to come out and chat with us now. Hi. I think you're still muted. There you are. Hi, Tammy.
Hi.
Alright, tell me a little bit about the, uh, the page that you'd like to have reviewed on your site, or what kind of help you're looking for today?
Um, I did some adjustments, and I just wanna just kind of make sure it all flows.
Okay.
Looked at it a couple of times before.
Great. Uh, let me pull that up here so I can make sure I'm seeing what you wanted to share. Did you share the link in our, okay, here we go, to tammytaylor.com. Got it. Okay. Let me see if I can share my screen here and talk through this with you. I already like what I'm seeing. This is exciting. Get that pop-up. Tammy, this looks good. Oh, look at that. Do you guys see how this is animated? That's cool. Alright, so Tammy. Tell us about what you've changed and what kind of feedback you're looking for here.
Um, this section, um, the about me, I put on my front page. And then I have, I have a more descriptive about me later.
Okay.
This is all the same, I think.
Okay, this is really beautiful. You've done an excellent job. The one thing that I would encourage you to do is get a button up here. So are you ready to find encouragement on your chaotic journey? Um. Let's see, could it could be this that you offer right here. Um, you can move this section up here to underneath. But basically, if somebody says, yes, I'm ready to find encouragement on my chaotic journey, they need to see where they can go right now. Because you have kind of a split second opportunity, really, uh, to grab their attention and get them to take action. So I can help you find encouragement and peace. Click here for whatever. Just have have a button right here or below, uh, below the the image here.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise, this is great. Uh, I think this is, this is totally good, you know, listing off your services here. Uh, people can learn more about these different aspects. Oh, great, you've got a Facebook group that you link to here that's free. Um, no, you've done a beautiful job. This is great. Hi.
She's saying hi to you. Wait, he, see, right here.
Hi.
Uh, hi.
Hello, it's nice to see you again. Have you been helping your mom with your website?
No. My mom's been doing it by herself, which I can tell you.
She's doing a wonderful job.
Thanks. Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, um, I think this is excellent. One thing that I will say, though, um, where you see Ula right here. Uh, I would, I would switch the language up right there, because people who already know about Ula aren't really the people that you need to be talking about Ula with, right? Um, we're, we're kind of sharing Ula as. Right? We're we're kind of sharing Ula as new life coach and folks who already know about it are either already coaches generally. Or, you know, they they already know what they need to know, right? So what I would put here is maybe coaching. Or maybe some other kind of outcome specific language.
Okay.
That way it makes more sense to the person that you're trying to attract and convert.
I was gonna put, I was thinking about that today. I was gonna put. Put it in my services and I think. Do I have? I have serve. Oh, okay. Um, I, is it under resources?
With services. Favorite things and oils.
Courses. I was thinking about doing something to do with coaching on my site.
Yeah, so I would just maybe put, make this say coaching, for instance, and then it could still go off to this page. Where you have information about Ula and you know how people might want to learn more. I would recommend that you maybe use a slightly more legible fonts where you have transform here, maybe use. A just like a heavier standard font in big letters so that transform is the easiest to read really clear. This is what this says. But yeah, this is, this is wonderful. And you know, you can share a little bit more about that. Maybe tell them, you know, here's what it'll do for you. And then maybe say we can. You know, get your seven part game planning place on a free 45 minute call and then have them apply for a call with you or something. Turn this into a landing page where they can check that stuff off. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Excellent. Oh, this is good. You did make this a landing page. Check you out.
See, it says coming soon.
On here.
That doesn't go anywhere yet because it says coming soon. I'm not sure exactly what to put there.
Got you. Okay. Well, that's totally fine. It's a, it's a beautiful work in progress and you're doing an excellent job here. And then you've got your courses listed. You've got a bigger about me page. This is good. This is really good. Just make sure you've got a button right up here up top. And and if you're not creating content yet, you should definitely have. Actually, you do have blog here. I would, you know, I would maybe put blog up here in the menu.
It's under resources.
Oh, I see. Okay, so maybe learn more, right? That might be, that might be a better name for this so that it's easier for people who are like, well, I want to know more about what she has to say. Learn more is just a little bit just into it's a copy tweak, right? It's not a huge change. But I think that that's going to spell out where they should go and what they're going to find there a little more effectively than resources.
Okay.
Yeah, or even learn, learn would be fine as well. Awesome. This is really good. Three quick tips for a positive. Yeah, this is, I love this. I love how you use this, this gift. I don't know if you created it yourself.
It was supposed to, it's supposed to be a battery filling up, but. It still does a little bit, so I left it.
Okay, yeah, no, it's it's cute and it's eye catching. I think you've done a really nice job here. Thank you so much for sharing. Do you have any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay. All right, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming on and sharing with everyone. All right, team, did we have another? Did we have another review that we were going to do? Do we establish that?
Yeah, I think Annie Rue was the one who made it first.
Okay.
She's still around.
All right, Annie, are you here? All right, Annie, let's hear from you. And let me know what page of your site you'd like me to look at.
So I want to change my homepage every month as I do a rotating four classes and then. I guess just look at my homepage, annyrue.com/hompage.
Okay, is this it or?
That's it.
Okay, it's beautiful. You've done an excellent job here. I adore your branding. This is really, really nice. Let's see homepage. This is so good. This is great. Okay, mailing list. This is excellent. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful work. Okay, let me see. Where does this go? More information. Excellent. Contact. Good, good. All right. So you're talking about. Okay, wow, you 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 mentioned wanting to add, change this up for different classes. So would that be like changing these sections down here or tell me more about that?
The whole entire. I don't know.
Okay, so what I would consider doing here is, I mean, so do you, tell me about like how many classes per week or rather how many classes per month? Do you offer courses?
So the idea is that each month is one big class. I guess this part that you're looking at would stay because I do that all the time. Those are private.
Okay.
If you back up to the top where it says register, that would be the thing that changes. So like holistic wellness. Step one, they always do that. The step two, that's what changes. So. Yoni steaming is this month, sneeze pee is next month, and then it just rotates through spit scope, womb tea, yoni steaming. And then just keeps going through. So step number two, register. If you click that button.
Mm hmm.
That's your pop up. And go to a different page every single month.
Got you. Okay, so what I would consider doing is actually listing the four different ones on a separate page and just having this register to take you over there. And then they can sign up for any of those classes or be directed off to the payment pages for for those classes from that page. That way, that way you aren't having to remake this every week. Another thing that you can do here is is really lean into the description of, you know, I, I host, you know, these four classes on a rotating basis every month. They can, maybe there's a single page payment that you offer here where they get access to all of them. Maybe there's like a bundle that you offer off of this page, but then if you want to pick and choose, you can go to another page where they can actually see listed out. You know, this is what these different ones are and how I can access them.
So say the part again about what would be. On this homepage, have a small list with four buttons.
No, so I would actually put, if you wanted to give people the opportunity to just purchase them all, you can actually, so let me ask you this, are your classes all in separate vaults?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Greg, just so I'm clear because I think this is true. We can add people to multiple vaults from a custom page landing page, right? If somebody purchases something, they can get into multiple vaults.
Yeah, and I have.
Yes, definitely.
Everything.
Okay, perfect. So, so what I would consider doing here is maybe offering the purchase link on this page for the bundle. But then have a separate page that you go off to where people can actually learn about the different ones, purchase them à la carte, and maybe also go ahead and have the. Have the all combined, you know, get them all together bundle option there as well.
So I have description pages for each one of the classes. How would I, if you go to the top right where it says classes and supplies, they're there. But I need to make sure that people are seeing them. So like microscope class and moonlight class and womb tea class, like no one. Unless they click on classes and supplies, no one knows that the descriptions are there.
Got you, got you. Okay, so here's, here's something you can do. Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna unshare and log into your account real quick. I'll show you something that you might be able to do here. Basically, you know how on some custom pages or just different pages on the site generally, you can have like. Like four or three or whatever images in a row. I would have a square image of each of these because you said it's four. And use the custom page section that has the four images. And then link off to those individual pages. And then you can put that on the homepage. You could say I offer these four classes on rotation every month. Click the, click here to learn more about each one. Or something to that effect. Let me find your page real quick and show you what I mean.
Like how I had at the bottom of the page for private consults, breastfeeding classes. And then private pregnancy have instead of the private, private coaching, everything have the four classes at the top of the same. Picture, 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 and then click it and then that goes off and maybe do the sticky tablet like Greg just showed us today so that it constantly is at the top.
Yep, you got it. You got it. Let me find. You have so many pages. I'm so proud of you. You're doing so much good work. All right, here, let me. Share. Okay, so here's your editor. So basically what I would say instead of what's here. Do it more justice by going to, I believe what I'm thinking of here is, yeah, here we go, the four photo strip. So add the four photo strip and then, you know, beneath each of these, you can write out description. Right? And then, oops. And and actually what I might do, and I think you've, you could probably do this pretty well in Canva is is just basically like. Have the name of it in in the image here and then maybe even in Canva, create sort of a button looking. Like a button looking like graphic on the image itself. So you're basically telling them to click the, click the image to be able to go off to the page.
Thank you. That makes perfect sense. I totally. I, I get it now.
Awesome. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove this so it's not on your site. But, but yeah, I think, I think that'll do what you're looking for. Thank you for sharing, Annie, and your site looks gorgeous. All right. So I think we've got a little bit of Q and A. Thank you, everybody for hanging out and sticking around. If you have not gone and done this yet, head over to ghettoiling.com forward slash move your groups. Those, those live calls will begin next Tuesday. That is the 19th. And that is going to be, I believe at noon Eastern on Tuesdays for six weeks. So if you want to work together on this, and I know I've seen some questions, I. If you've got questions that you know you need answers to and they're not in the Q and A, not going to see them. Because there's so much to scroll through here, but I did see one at a quick glance where somebody was saying, you know, I've got, you know, this one vault that I'm thinking about doing, but then there's this thing. I would recommend that you take advantage of being able to get on these live calls and get support and feedback. As you perform this critical task of creating a group resource for your business. And and take advantage of this that's being offered here right now. You will be able to continue referencing this stuff into the future. This is a course you're going to continue to have access to. But we're not always going to be offering a live series of support and video and feedback and all that kind of stuff. While you're getting it done. So take advantage of this for sure. All right, there's just a few questions left in the. In the. The chat here, the Q and A. Ilka asked, can we own these slides from today? That's a good question. I hadn't created them as a PDF, but I will go ahead and get that done and we can attach that to. The recording of this video, maybe send it out by email. So just keep an eye out. For the recording email that goes out today. And then as later on, if you look at it on YouTube, we'll have a link below. Good idea. All right. Can you make it easier to be able to post an article on my blog to be able to grab the PDF or file and post it? For now, it is not possible. So if I'm not sure that I'm clear. But to post an article on your blog, you would actually be taking the copy, the words. That you have either written in a word processor or as I think possibly might be the case for you, Ilka, maybe you're taking blog content from a site that you were working on and blogging on previously and moving that content over. The format of the content that you're moving over is going to be in text. That way you can actually put the text itself on your good oiling blog. You're not going to get the benefit of of SEO, for instance, if we are relying on it just simply being a PDF file. Now, if you are logged in and want to upload a file that maybe you give away and you don't want to, you know, put a gate in front of it, people will have to sign up for anything to get access to it. There is a really simple way to add a file to your system. And actually, I teach this in the course that you guys have just gotten access to. So you can, you can see how you can move things around. But let me show you just really quickly. I'm still logged into Annie's site here. And I'll show you if you want to add a file to a section on your page. You go to this more rich right here. And then you insert or manage files. And this is where you would actually go and you take a file that you've already uploaded, if that's the one that you choose or. You go to upload file, you click that, you download it from your computer and then the, the link to that PDF is going to be on the page. Now, if you would prefer for it to show up. As a, you know, as sort of like an image where they can sort of see what the PDF looks like, then you just want to take the front page of that PDF. And use any tool on the web to turn that PDF file, that page into a picture file, right, or a JPG, a JPEG file. And then you could add that image here and then link it to the file that you've uploaded to your system. I hope that helps. All right. Is it possible to auto send blog posts to my list? Yes, Heidi, it is possible to do this. There is a little button that you can click or a checkbox that you can click to send this off to everyone who is on your list when you create a blog post. It's not what I recommend though, because not everyone who is in your system. Is necessarily someone who is specifically subscribed for blog updates. So if you're blogging, the real purpose of blogging. Is to help people who don't know about you yet, know about you and the things that you know. And so this is really something that should be facing your leads. And everyone that's in your system right now, or the majority of folks who are in your system right now, most likely are downloaded from your VO. These are your members. And if you're blogging about stuff that's not young living specific and their relationship with you is young living specific that could confuse. Or frustrate them and they didn't necessarily grant you permission to send them stuff that's not just young living focused. So it's really simple. If you began building a newsletter list of leads, if those people are opting in via a landing page. They're getting tagged, right? You have the opportunity to tag them as lead or as newsletter or something like that. And then all you have to do is create a saved reply for yourself. So every time you send out a new blog post, here are the five things that you include in it. You swap out the link to the new blog post and you just make sure you filter your contacts for those tags that are supposed to receive the blog posts and send it out that way. And the best way to do this, honestly, you guys, and I've talked about this in previous trainings about how to manage yourself and your time. If you write for blog posts at a time, it takes about as much time as it takes to actually write and perform the whole process of writing, posting, sharing your blog. Go ahead and write for schedule for and then just be done with it. It actually takes a lot less time if you batch it all together. You'll find your new leads, Heidi, where the tags are. So you'll search your contact manager for the tag. That is on the landing page. So if your landing page is is about a. I don't know, a mindfulness guide, then you put mindfulness guide in the tag section of that landing page. And then all you have to do is filter your contacts for mindfulness guide. Or if you put lead on all of your lead facing or lead generating landing pages, then you just search for the lead tag. And then she says, in my activity, it shows message sent from blog post. Where do I find that? So I think we're talking about blog post comments. Greg, do you, do you think that's right? This is from Heidi's comment here.
Yeah, probably. She was message sent from blog post. Yeah, that's gotta be blog post comment. And that does get sent to you by email. Otherwise, it should show up if you remember who it was. It should show up on the contact manager and it may also be on your dashboard in the recent section. As long as you don't have a bunch of other stuff showing up there. So that might be the best place to look right away.
Awesome. Jen says class, yes, but if I already have a class enough, can I add a group like we were talking about today for an exclusive that those who are in the class rather than creating a group on Facebook? Yeah, so what, what I'm talking about today, and if you get into the course that we've created for you, it actually outlines all of the specifics and how these different things work. If you have a class in a vault and that is a class in your vault that's designed to, let's just say, give an orientation to new young living members. Then that's going to be a great place for you to use as a jumping off point for a member vault, right? That's. Like, I guess that's kind of my main answer. I wish I could be a little bit more specific for you. Basically, if you have a class and get oiling, it's being delivered, you already have a vault. And if that class already serves a purpose that is outlined in the course, which the course does give specific examples, we don't get into like coaching programs and stuff. This is very much about young living. This is about your members. This is about your builders. This is about leads. So if a class that you have already fills a purpose for one of those three categories, then you've got a vault already made that you can just continue to build out into a more effective holistic resource. All right. Will the live calls for the training be recorded? Yes, those will be recorded and posted inside of that vault. All right. Can you show how to add a tag to a landing page? Yeah, that's really simple. I've already got Annie's thing up here still. Sorry, Annie, I'm going to use you as a guinea pig. All right, so Annie has a custom page here. And in her site settings under lead capture settings. As we saw earlier, she has this beautiful pop up with all this information. She has added tags here. And her tags, sorry, are specifically related to these topics. So you just add something here, you type something. And then you just click this and that becomes a tag for you, or you can search for a tag that you've already created. Now, if you're using, let me get out of here. If you're using a landing page of which I think Annie has. this example of a really simple landing page. When you go to settings here, under page settings, you can add tags right here under tags to add. And then all you would do when you want to find your people who have those tags is to go to manage under your contacts. Select filter and then search for the tags that you want. And that's going to result in giving you, it's going to result in showing you all of those leads who came in via that page. Awesome. All right, you guys, thank you for all the great questions, for staying around long and for being so excited about this. Because we're really excited for you to take advantage of this. So head over to get oiling.com forward slash move your groups and get started on planning. We will have our first live call next week and just be on the lookout in your email for for updates on that. Excited to see you there.
Thanks, everybody.
Next week.
See you later.